Hello and welcome, world language teachers. Welcome. As you're coming in, feel free to put where you're from and what language you teach in the chat. I'm Maori Lam. I'm a Latin teacher from Connecticut. Oh, great. We have lots of representation here. Love it. Awesome. Oh, more Connecticut people. Yay. Oh, wow. Lots of Connecticut people. Cool. Ooh, lots of people from Spain, too. Fantastic. Oh, very cool. Awesome. So as people are coming in, people are adding where they're from and what language they teach. Amazing. Couple other Latin teachers there. Woo-hoo. And yes, we will be doing things that are applicable to ESL teachers. Someone asked. I actually taught ESL before I taught Latin. ESL taught me a lot about what I know about teaching Latin, actually. It's wonderful. Amazing. Thanks, everyone. So welcome today. If this is your first session, welcome to the Quizlet Unconference. If you went to the last session, we're going to be talking about some different things here. This is very exciting. If you have questions, I would ask that you please put them in the question and answer box. Because I will get to them eventually, hopefully. And if I don't, I'm actually going to give you my email at the end of this session. So feel free to email me and I will answer as many questions as I can. And I will answer them. Last year, I got over 100 emails and I managed to answer all of them. So feel free to ask. Wonderful. All right. So many folks here. That's fantastic. All right, we're going to get started with talking about world languages and how Quizlet is applicable to world languages. I know that as a world language teacher, Quizlet has been incredibly helpful to me in the last few years during the pandemic. But even since then, it is a place, a repository really, where I keep everything for my classes. And so Quizlet is pretty amazing like that. This is my seventh Unconference. I'm so excited to be involved with it again. And Quizlet just comes out with new features, it seems, every year that are so very helpful to language teachers. So here is our agenda for today. First, we're going to talk about class progress. Then we're going to talk about the importance of using multimodal sets. Someone was asking about this in the last session, so I hope you're here to ask more questions. We're going to talk about different review options. And finally, we're going to talk about Q Chat. So if you have questions, again, I'm going to ask that you please put them in the Q and A box and we will get to them as soon as we can. And if you're just joining us, feel free to put where you're from and what language you teach into the chat. So first, we're going to talk about class progress. This is one of my favorite features in Quizlet because it lets me know whether or not and how my students have interacted with the Quizlet sets that I've added to the class. And so it's pretty simple to create a class. You do not need a paid account to create a class. Any teacher can create a class. And what you do is you add sets to that class. These can be sets that you've created. These can be sets that other people have created that you've copied. These are sets that you want your class to engage with. Then you add members to the class. I highly recommend that if you're adding your students to your classes, that you use their school email address. I often have students asking me, can I just use my personal account? And I would say, just for security reasons, just use your school account. I think it's important to make sure that we're doing that. So when you're adding members, make sure you're using your students' school accounts. There is a link you can share, or you can just add your students' emails. Both are options. And again, if you have any questions, make sure you're putting them in the question and answer box. You can also add folders. And so what I really like to do, and I'll talk about this in a minute, is put everything I have in folders. That way, I can save it from year to year as I'm recreating classes. And someone asked if if you could archive your classes from year to year. And I actually don't delete my classes. I just hang on to them, as you can see here, from year to year. So I actually don't archive them or anything. I just keep them. And then the next year, I'll add more classes. And I do that because I actually use folders. And so again, you can add a set to a class or folder right from that set. You have a lot of different options. But if you're using Add to Class or Folder, I would actually add sets to class and folder. So if I have a Latin II class for this year, I will add whatever set I'm using to that. But I'll also add that set to a folder that I have labeled Latin II. Because that helps me to understand what Quizlet says I used the year before. So then, the next year, when I'm creating the Quizlet class, I can just add those sets. So it's super easy. It saves me time and it helps me to stay organized with my Quizlet sets. So that's something I think is a really helpful tip here. And that's why I make folders. Also, when you're using classes in Quizlet, you can see students' class progress. So you will see their name on the left side, and then you'll see what Quizlet different activities they've interacted with with this particular set. So have they used Learn? Have they used flashcards? Have they used Write? Have they used Spell? Have they used Test? Have they used Match? So this is really important so that you can see, okay, maybe this student hasn't engaged with Quizlet, or maybe this student has done all the things Quizlet. For me, it's incredibly helpful because I find that my students are far more successful if they've engaged in multiple modes of using Quizlet. So that can be really, really helpful. So I highly recommend, if you're using classes, to look at class progress. So that you can see what your students are doing and you can see how they're engaging in Quizlet. Maybe if you see them all doing one thing over and over again, maybe you could encourage them to do something else. Or maybe you could ask how that's working for them and why it's working for them, so that you can incorporate it into other parts of your class. There's a lot of different things you can do here. Something that's really important to note is that students will be able to use premium study modes to learn and test for free if their teachers follow these steps. They create sets, they create a class, they then add those sets to the class, and then add students to those class sections. Again, easiest way, just add their school emails. Next, we're going to be talking about generating. As many of you have seen, Quizlet's gotten a real glow up over the past two years when it comes to AI. And so generating materials is easier than ever to help with the world language classroom. Quizlet is honestly something that I use nearly daily with my students. So it's pretty cool. I think it's something that is helpful and you can generate things so easily. Study Guides, which is formerly Magic Notes, is something, again, I use nearly daily in my classroom to help me create sets. Practice Test is a newer feature. It's really cool. Right now, it's working in English, but they will have it created so that it can be used with multiple languages eventually. And I've done some test runs with Latin and it's starting to be pretty good for it. So Practice Test is coming out soon with that. Another cool thing about Practice Test is it will be coming out with printable options at some point, too, which is fantastic. And so for Study Guides, which again, the thing I use most often, it allows you to upload lecture slides, readings, or notes to get a study guide. And so here, you can just copy and paste the text, which is probably the easiest way to do it. You can upload a file from your computer. You can upload it right from Google Drive. And I'm someone who is a little bit obsessed with Google Slides for every class. So this is really a game changer for me. I just use my class slides from that day and I upload them to create study guides. And it's so easy because then whatever we went over that day is now in a study guide and has created a Quizlet set based on it. So it's a real game changer in saving time. Finally, a new feature that I really appreciate, because I've been using all sorts of AI to do this, is uploading YouTube videos. And so using YouTube videos, you can get a study guide based on that, which is so cool. And it's just a great new feature. And so I'll just go over this quickly. When you get a study guide, you first get an outline of the main points of the study guide that you put in there. You get access to flashcard sets from the study guide. You get access to discussion questions, and the discussion questions are really cool because you get not only the discussion question, but a sample answer. So that is a really fun feature. And finally, it can connect to Q Chat, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Next, we're going to talk about multimodal sets. It's really interesting because I think multimodality is one of the best ways that students can learn a language. And if you've read through the actual 2024 standards, it's pretty clear that multimodality is incredibly important in language teaching and learning. So it affirms everything that we're going to be talking about here. And so again, multimodality is the idea that students are engaging in multiple senses while they are language learning. As we know, language learning does not happen in a vacuum. The more we can engage students' senses in the language learning, the better off they're going to be. And so the traditional definition of multimodal language is conveying meaning through the combination of two or more modes. And by modes here, we mean speaking, listening, viewing, picture enhancement, things like that. So those are the different modes that students can learn with here. And there are many ways to enhance sets. So we'll be talking about audio enhancement. We'll be talking about adding pictures from the internet, adding photos, adding multiple distractors or multiple choice answers, adding diagrams, and highlighting with rich text. So there are a number of auditory options that we're going to go over. First, we're going to talk about actually just adding audio to sets. And I talked about this a little bit in the previous session, but really, Quizlet is so easy to add audio. And I think that this can be a real game changer for inclusivity for students. Because not only can they read the target language, but then they can hear the target language as well. And there are a couple of different options for this. The easiest one, hold the spacebar and record. You can record your own voice speaking the target language for students. Which is really, really easy. You can also choose this option down here, Listening to Quizlet Audio. So Quizlet already has audio with AI that can say the target language, which is awesome. So you can choose whether you're going to use Quizlet audio, or if you're going to record your own audio for this. And this is a Quizlet Plus feature. Anytime you see the little yellow square with the plus, that's something that is a paid feature. And so you can, again, choose your recording or choose Quizlet audio. And it's super easy to record. All you do is press the spacebar. If you haven't tried this and you have a Quizlet account, go in and try because it's really easy and quick to use. I find it incredibly helpful to do that. It also has automatic language recognition. I put this in here and it automatically recognized that it was Latin. And it gave me options for adding macrons to my Latin for long marks, which is really cool. Sometimes it doesn't automatically find your language, so you would click where it says Latin and a bunch of different languages would show up. So you'd be able to click that. And this is an example of what that would look like. If you were using Quizlet and for some reason it was not recognizing the language, you could use this instead. That happens to me when I'm doing Ancient Greek sometimes. So it's important to know that you can make sure it is the language that you want it to be. And again, special characters, once it's identified that language, become available to you. So because this has been identified as Latin, I get all of these special characters from Latin, which is incredibly helpful. And this is the same for other languages as well. When I'm using Greek, the special characters pop up for Greek as well. Adding images. Adding images is so important. I think that a lot of times for my students, adding images can really enhance their experience. Both adding images and audio, but really images because a picture is worth a thousand words and it helps students to remember things. And so there are a couple of different options here. You can see that when you click on this, you can get different images. You can either pick images from the internet or upload your own image. Both are options, which is incredibly helpful. You can also add photos. And so photos come in through the app. So I had some students who really loved doing that this year. They had the app on their phone and they would take quick pictures of whatever they're going through. We do a lot of drawing in my classroom. And so if someone had drawn something on their board, or they had drawn something on their whiteboard and they wanted to add that, then they could add a photo from their phone. So this is a really cool Quizlet Plus feature that you can do right from the app. And I think as world language teachers, it's kind of fun to add photos of things. And again, adding images, if you want to find photos from the internet, you can do that as well. Another thing that I like to do is add diagrams. And if you want a lot more information about this, look up my presentation. I think it's from 2022, where I really do a deep dive into diagrams and world language learning. I use this for everything, from maps to identifying parts of pictures, to even doing textual analysis with putting the text as a picture and having students identify what's going on in the text. So if you don't have access to that, or you can't find it, just feel free to email me and I'll email you the presentation. But diagrams are an amazing game changer. They are something I use all the time in my Quizlet sets because it really helps students to engage with pictures on a bigger level. And so that's something you can look at. Text enhancement options. Now, text enhancement is really important because it can emphasize parts of the text. My disclaimer here is that not all students can see all colors and not all students can see all markings. And so please be mindful of that when you're using text enhancement options. Generally speaking, the Quizlet text enhancement options are friendly to these types of accommodations, but it's always important to check with your students. I really like that the colors are yellow, blue, and pink because a lot of my students are red-blind, red-green colorblind or red color misunderstandings. And so this is really helpful because they can see the differences between these colors. And so here you have the option, again, this is a paid feature, where you can use bold, italics, underline, and highlight using blue, yellow, and pink. And something that's really cool about this is you can have a different system for it. So let's say here, in this particular example, I was highlighting the subject in pink. I was doing the prepositional phrases in blue, and then I was bolding and highlighting in yellow the verb. But there are a lot of different things you can do and systems you can have for text. So that's incredibly helpful. Again, there's a lot of different things you could do with it. You can do questions here. You can do different types of texts here. It really depends. Anything you can do to make parts of the text stand out so that students are paying attention to that can be really helpful with that rich text formatting. Next, we're going to talk about adding multiple choice distractors. I often find, especially as I'm doing more advanced work with my students, like AP Latin, that if I'm asking questions based on just those sets, it can be challenging because it can be very obvious what the right answer is. So when you have a paid account, you can actually add multiple choice options. I'll even take old multiple choice tests that I'll give students and I'll put them into Quizlet using these multiple choice distractors and then playing games like Blast or Quizlet Live with students and having them use the multiple choice answers. So this is something that's been incredibly helpful. These are actually shown in Checkpoint as well, which is really cool. So the ones you put in there are the ones for Checkpoint. I love Checkpoint. It is such a great, quick formative assessment for students and it will use your own multiple choice distractors, which is great. So check that out if you haven't already. Let's talk about review options. So you've got a bunch of different things you can do. Match is a speed match. You're basically playing against yourself, trying to do it as quickly as possible. Sometimes my students like to say, oh, I did it in 10 seconds, or I did it in 40 seconds, or whatever. And then they get competitive about it. But really, it's for students that that want to do that. I would say not all students want to do a quick speed game. And that's great because there are a lot of different options for this. There's also Classic Quizlet Live, the OG. That's the one they love. My students love Quizlet Classic Live. It's really, really fun. They love being the animals. I usually do it so that they're in groups, but you can also do it individually. It's really fun for them. Blast, which is new, has the matching terms and definitions, but as it states, it's blast. So it's blasting meteor things. And so it's really fun. It kind of feels a little like old-school 80s video game in a like awesome way that my students appreciate in like a nostalgic way. And it's just a really fun way to engage with it. Checkpoint is the quick formative feedback. Love it. It's a great thing I use as an exit ticket a lot so that I can check for understanding. And I love that it shows me student understanding. And I also love that I can kind of gauge, okay, where are my students right now? What do we need to review more? And what do they really get at this point? So those are really good for review mode. There's also traditional flip flashcards. My students are doing these all the time on their phones. They love doing the flip flashcards on their phones, which is really, really cool. Learn is great because you just review it until you know it. It's really cool, too, because I think it goes really well with the actual 2024 standards, which no longer use the word memorize. They use the word wrote, which is basically repeating it until you know it. And so the difference between that and memorization is you're not just sitting there and kind of looking at it. You're actually actively engaging with something until you know it. And so that's why I think Learn is really, really powerful here. Testing is where students can test themselves. You can create a test for them. There's a lot of different ways you can do this. And another really cool feature is that you can print out tests. So that's really fun. And Q Chat, which is one of my personal favorites. I love Q Chat because I really think it is a future of personalized learning. It helps teach and reteach students material from the different Quizlet sets. It reaches beyond that, having them apply their knowledge. There's just a lot of really cool options here. So Q Chat is amazing. If you haven't checked it out yet, it's fantastic. We'll talk about it a little bit further on. And just as a note here, when you add sets to a class, students who are in that class on Quizlet can use Learn and Test for free, which are generally premium study modes. So that's something to keep in mind. Traditional flashcards, you flip back and forth. You see terms and definitions, and you can do different options. Someone was asking earlier, if you have a big Quizlet set, can you just do the starred ones? The answer here is yes. So students are reviewing only starred items. You can turn that on in flashcards. What I like to do with students is often do the top 250 words in Latin. And so when I'm doing that particular Quizlet set and having students review it, I will have them star the things that they want to go through and not star the ones they think they know really well. So that's a really cool option. And that's a great thing to explain to students so that they know that they can do that if they already know parts of the set, so they can focus on the stuff that they don't already know. Learn is great because it's matching term and definition, and it comes back to the ones that you didn't get right. I think that that's really helpful. So it goes over and over and again. That's a really helpful thing. Learn is something my students also really like using. And again, there are a lot of different options here. You can do multiple choice. You can do flashcards. You can do written. You can choose term or definition. There's a lot of different things. You can add audio or not. Again, a lot of different options for Learn here. So students have a lot of different choices here. And again, they can use it for free if they have, if they've been added to a class with any of the sets in that class, I should add. So the students can use Learn and Test for free with the sets that are added to the class in Quizlet. Test is really great. Again, you can print, which is awesome. You can choose what types of questions you want to use. True, false, multiple choice, matching, or written. And you can choose up to 42 questions. So this is a great way for students to review. I often use Test as a practice test for students. So that's really helpful. And Blast, the new one we talked about. Love this. It's fun. You blast things with lasers. All sorts of fun. And it's something that students can work on in groups, too. So it's an interactive game. It's something where there are groups of two to four students working on it. So it's really fun to have them playing a game in groups like this. Categories is another new game that will be launched soon. Categories, I've been playing around a little bit with. It is awesome. Students don't need to sign in or do anything, but sit there and watch the screen. So you'll project the screen and the screen will have the categories. And the categories will be created by AI. So you can add up to, I think, five sets without pictures with 15 cards per set. And what it does is it combines those sets and then creates categories based on those sets and questions. And they actually have the difficulty levels there based on the sets, which is really, really cool. It's really cool that AI can do all of this for you. And so what you would do is you would add, see Test 1 and Test 2. That's where you'd add either the team names or the student names as they were asking these questions. And then the teacher would be the one who would say, okay, who got it? And add the the answer, add how many points they got and things like that. So this is something that's great because students don't need to sign into Quizlet. What they need to do is pay attention to the board and the teacher will control it. But you can use several Quizlet sets at once like this, which is really, really cool. So when this comes out, I highly recommend you check it out. It's very cool. Again, great that students don't have to sign in. Great that it's an easy Jeopardy! board created by AI. Because I know I've created a lot of Jeopardy! boards in my time and they take a lot of work. So this is very cool. You can also go back to Wonderful Quizlet Live, which students love to do, and using Checkpoint. Again, I love using Checkpoint for my exit ticket or my entrance ticket after a long weekend to make sure students understand what we're doing. And I love using Live just to review whatever we're doing in class. It can be like a quick brain break, a quick something different just to make sure students are engaged. Because students are doing a lot. So it's really important to give them opportunities to, you know, have a little fun with it, too. So I love doing that. And I really appreciate that in Checkpoint, you can choose whatever 12 questions you want to be asked. And there are also options for students to do writing, too. So there's a lot of different options for Checkpoint to do that formative check. And you can also choose whether or not students are answering with the term or definition. And you can turn the leaderboard on and off. My students tend to be pretty competitive, so they enjoy that leaderboard. I understand that some students may not love that as much, so maybe you could turn off that leaderboard if your students don't love it. I like that you have the choice. And also, you can allow students to join late. If you know you're doing it first thing in class and maybe you're going to have some stragglers coming into class, you can allow them to join late, which is really cool. You can also, in Quizlet Live, have your teams arranged. When you're doing Classic, not Checkpoint. But for Classic, you can do the random teams, or you can do the individuals. And so I love that we have those choices. Because sometimes it's fun for them all to go up against each other. And the cool part is they give them animal names. When I'm doing a set in Latin, it's so cool because it automatically switches to Latin. I know it does that for other languages as well. But it's super cool to see the different language. Because they're like, ooh, what animal are you? I don't know what animal that is. And they'll, they'll look it up and that's really fun, too. And I just love playing games because it's great to have that language activation and language-focused brain breaks. Taking a break from class time to do a quick game, but having them still engage with the language during that game is incredibly powerful. Next, we're going to talk about Q Chat. I love Q Chat. It's amazing. It is a personal AI tutor to help you reach your learning goals. It's awesome. There are so many different opportunities here. Let's talk about what students can do with it. There are many, many different activities. Let's talk about some of them. And this is what you're going to get when you turn in there. You're going to say, hey, I know you're doing this set. How can I help you? Then you write what you're supposed to do. And there's a little warning saying, do not enter personal information. I think that's incredibly powerful. That's something that's really important for students to keep remembering, that AI is a tool. It's not something you should be adding personal information to. And so that's really important. I really like here here for Quizme. Quizme is one that I encourage students to use a lot. And so this is really cool because they will be asked a question about the Latin here, or whatever you're doing. And so I will do a I'll put the answer there. And then you can get this effective affirming feedback, which is really cool. I know some language tools give more passive-aggressive feedback, so it's really nice that Quizlet gives this wonderful, effective affirming feedback for students. And there are a lot of different things. Story mode is something else. And this is actually a pretty good Latin story. There's a lot of different modes. Practicing with sentences. There are just a lot of different ways to use Q Chat. My favorite is Apply Your Knowledge. Apply Your Knowledge basically takes the big picture and has students apply their knowledge. And the other one I really like is Ask Me a Question. Ask a question. And so students who might not want to ask a question in class, but they have a question, maybe they're doing Quizlet's homework or something like that, can then ask a question of that set and they can get an answer from Q Chat. That's pretty good. And so that's awesome. I have not had complaints from my students about using Q Chat. They love it. They use it all the time. And so if you're not using it, I highly recommend trying it out. It is a fantastic feature. I use Study Guides most of all, but probably my students use Q Chat most of all, because I think that's something that's so important. It's important to give them an opportunity for personalized learning, being able to review things the way they want to review things, and give them opportunities to ask questions. So it's a very powerful tool. Again, using it so that students can do independent practice. It feels conversational, taking a deeper dive into material, relearning in a different way, and giving easy explanations for things. These are all incredibly helpful. These are all incredibly helpful. And some of the benefits of Q Chat is students can self-monitor their progress. They can know whether or not they're understanding based on the responses in Q Chat. They can also ask questions if they need to. They can get feedback on their answers. Again, even if the answer is you didn't get it right, there's affirming feedback, there's hints, things like that. Students can choose multiple paths in order to acquire knowledge, which I think is really beneficial. Students can have concepts explained in different ways by using Teach Me. And I think that can be really helpful. And finally, again, gotta love the affirming feedback. We're also going to talk about expert solutions. If you have not checked this out, I highly recommend it. There are so many amazing textbooks on here. And one of the cool features here is you have expert written and verified answers that are related to your textbook. I was pleasantly surprised at the amount of Latin textbooks they have on here. But just the amount of textbooks are very, very cool, which I appreciate. And so you can go in, you can find whatever textbooks you're using. And you can also find the expert written and verified answers. You can search by different users. I love to search for other teachers. There are specific teachers too that I follow all the time and look at Quizlet sets for. And so that's really helpful to me to look and look at the different creators who are creating these expert solutions. But if you haven't checked it out or you haven't checked it out with your students, I highly recommend you do. It's really cool to have that. Finally, the big game changer, the one that I am most excited about, which is Student Pass. If you haven't checked this out yet, it should appear above sets right now. And what it does is when you activate a student pass, students can go to quizlet.com/join and enter in a code. So they don't have to have an account. They don't have to sign in. There are no advertisements and there's uninterrupted access to the premium study modes, learn and test. This is so cool. It's something that makes this so accessible for students and it does not require them to sign in or have an account. I think Student Pass is going to be such a game changer this year. I also love that it's 90 minutes. As someone who teaches 90 minute classes, it's perfect so that my students can have access all during class. So this is something that I think is going to be an amazing feature and something that I hope everyone will check out. I am going to give you my contact info and use these last few minutes to answer questions. As I said at the beginning, if I do not get to your question or if you have lingering questions after this, please, please, please feel free to email me. I answered over a hundred emails after the conference last year. I am so happy to do that again. So please feel free. My Twitter is at Latin Tech Tools. I'm Latin Tech Tools on Instagram. And my email is latentechttools@gmail.com. I'm going to pop into the Q and A now and I'm going to answer some of the questions in there. Again, I don't think we'll get to everyone, but hopefully we will get to as many as possible. And if you still have lingering questions, feel free to reach out. Someone asked, where is categories on the home screen? I only see Blast. Categories is coming. It's not live yet, but it is coming. Laurie asks if it's possible for non-Latin letter alphabets? Great question. So there is Chinese on there. I believe there is Hebrew. There's definitely Ancient Greek, which I use a lot. And so for Ancient Greek, when I enter in Ancient Greek, it actually gives me an Ancient Greek keyboard, which is fantastic. And so what's nice for me is you can go in, you can add the characters. I'm not sure about what Quizlet audio is available for those particular options, but I know that for Greek, I add my own Greek to my Quizlet study sets, but I love that you can just use the characters from Quizlet there. That's really helpful. Someone asked about the nickname feature for classes. I don't quite know what you're talking about if you're using the nickname feature for Quizlet Live. All the students are assigned an animal in Quizlet Live, which is really great. That's super helpful so that students don't put their names. And what I really like about it is it doesn't put students on the spot. So if someone is, if someone is, let's say, for example, at the bottom and there, it's like, oh, the foxes are at the bottom. It's not like Little Maureen. So that's something that's really helpful. Interesting question. So Maria asked, if you share, if you teach parallel sections of the same course, is there a way to share a class with another teacher? Interesting. I do not think there currently is. What I might do in that particular situation is I would create a folder and I would add all of the things to that folder. And then I would just share all the sets from that folder with the other teacher and ask them to create a folder. That way you can both have that. Someone asks, can you add previous sets to folders? How? Please. Yes, you can add any sets you've created to that folder. Sets you've created before, sets you create after you created the class. Basically, fair game. It's really great. It's super helpful. Let's see. Oh, good question. I've only had one Latin class for all the years I've used Quizlet. What's the advantage of having class for each semester? That is such a great question. I would say that the real advantage to having a class for each semester is adding different students to that class and following along on class progress. So for me, creating a new class each year is, or each semester that I have different students is super helpful because then I have different students added to that class. That's a great question. Then I just save everything in that folder for the class. So let's say it's an AP Latin class. I would have an AP Latin folder where I would share all that stuff for AP Latin. Good question. Let's see. Okay. Interesting. So Christine asks what it shows for class progress. So class progress shows if a student has engaged with an activity for that set. That's all it shows. But that's super helpful and you get a lot more information if you use something like Quizlet Checkpoint with students. That way you can see how many students got it right, how many students got it wrong. If you're looking for specifics in terms of whether or not students understand a set, I would highly recommend using Checkpoint for that. Okay. Ah, okay. So Catherine asks if students can get progress if they don't finish an activity? No, they do not get credit for the class progress if they don't finish the activity. I know that's, that's frustrating. But you can't see how long they spent on an activity. You can just see if they engaged in that activity with class progress. That's a really good, that's a really interesting point though. That's really, yeah, interesting. Another thing that I think is really helpful with class progress is just seeing if students are engaging with material outside of class. That's something that I think is really helpful. Something I would say, if I'm looking for whether or not they actually got it, I would use Checkpoint because Checkpoint gives you more robust information about each student. That's a really good question. Someone asked about doing visually for ASL. For ASL, you can use pictures. I don't know, and I, you could engage with the games as well because of the written text in the pictures. I'm not quite sure what the question is, but I would say you can use those accommodations there. Linda has asked, can students record their voices for pronunciation practice? Yes, in the past I have had students use their own voices. They have to have a Quizlet account to create their own voices, to record their own voices. That's really important. Let's see. Someone asked, my user handle on Quizlet is, oh my gosh, I have about five of them. Look up Maureen Lamb. I'm Maureen Lamb or Maureen Gassert on most of mine. But if you look up Maureen Lamb, some of them should come up. Let's see. Can you use multiple types of questions within one test? Yes, you can use multiple types of questions within one test. Good question. Ah, okay. Sonia asked, for the categories game, do the sets need to have only up to 15 terms? Yes, they have to have at least 15 terms. And yes, those terms will be, it's not necessarily for categories that each term will be taken. That's such a great question. Instead, AI is using the information they get to create those categories. So it's not kind of a one-to-one situation. So there needs to be just enough information that those categories can be created, which is why you need 15 sets. That's a really, I mean, sorry, 15 cards per set. Really good question. Oh, interesting. Susan asks if there's something in Q Chat that will cause them to psych the system to do things we wouldn't want them to do? The answer there is no, it will shut it down. It's not going to let it do anything like that. Most educational technology is already primed to do that, so I would not worry about that. Really good question. Let's see. Ooh, okay. Someone asks that they have upload materials for students like Quizlet and given them access and students say they don't know where to find it. I've had that same issue, but as soon as I started creating classes with Inquisit, students know where to find the class. The class link is on the homepage of our, of our LMS. So they know where that Quizlet link is. And so that way, if I create the Quizlet sets, I add them all to the class. Students know where to find those sets. They don't lose them. They know where they live. And so that's really important. Someone has asked, how can a teacher evaluate student engagement with Q Chat? And the answer there is they can't, but I would say that the Q Chat is more for students engaging with it. And so it's really important for students for personalized learning to be able to do it. But I don't think it's something that necessarily needs teacher oversight. This is something where students are engaging with AI in the way that it's a personal tutor and it's engaging with them by doing applying your knowledge, Quizme, Ask Me a Question, things like that. And so this isn't something that necessarily is for teachers to evaluate. In fact, I would argue that it's not evaluative at all. This is just an opportunity for students to get some personalized support. Let's see. Oh, if you post links in Canvas, can students still access those sets from Canvas? Absolutely. In fact, you can even export and embed them in Canvas. I was doing that for my students' final exam, which is really helpful. All right, I just have enough for about three more questions. Let's see. Irene asks, with the student pass, could I leave it open until the 90 minutes are up and then add a new pass? Yes. Yes, you can. You can add a new pass after the 90 minutes are up. And it can be used multiple times too, which is really, really helpful. Good question. Let's see. Trying to think. Ooh, Ulysses, great name, asks, how can we set up the category game via AI? Actually, Quizlet AI takes care of that for you. So it'll be launched in a couple of days. If you have some questions about it though, feel free to reach out to me. Categories is something that's a new feature. And so if you have feedback on it, also feel free to give feedback to the Q and A team. That's really helpful. Let's see. Let's see. Ellen asks that there's a file size for YouTube? It wouldn't be a file because you're adding a link to YouTube. For the YouTube videos, please make sure that they are public and that you have permission to use the video. It is an educational video. All right. Oftentimes I'll use my own videos, so if I post them on YouTube, I could use my own video for this, which is really cool. Let's see. All right. Mariko asks, is it possible to modify a study set and keep both a new and an old version? Yes. What I would do is I would copy that set and then I would, I would modify it. That's such a good question. And then you can have, you can have two different sets, which is awesome. Let's see. Let's see. Just looking, let's see if there'll be, okay, we have time for one more question. The other questions. Ooh, Christine asks if there is an explanation that can be created for a study guide? So if you can copy and paste something like a grammatical explanation from a textbook or write it out or, yeah, you can absolutely use that. So let's say you want to write out a grammatical explanation. Yeah, go for it and upload that. Someone also asked if you don't have Google Drive, is there a way for you to upload materials? Absolutely. Download it and then upload it. So if it's not, if you don't have Google Drive, if you're using another, another platform, just download whatever you have and then upload it into upload from your computer and that should work. All right. Unfortunately, that is all we have time for right now. I will keep my contact information on the screen in case you need to reach out to me. Again, I will be happily, happy to answer your question or if I can't answer it, I am so happy to find someone who can. But thank you so much for coming today. And again, feel free to reach out if you have any questions. Have a wonderful day and thank you for being a world language teacher. We're so important. Yay. Have a wonderful day. Take care, everyone.